Good morning. We're going to start today's public meeting. The time now is 10:15. Unfortunately, we need to start on a sad moment. We want to take just a moment to acknowledge the senseless and cowardly murder of over 140 Pakistanis and 130 of them children. And on behalf of the entire commission, just want to express our condolences and prayers to everyone, and I think everyone, the entire world that's been touched by this evil tragedy. Next on the updates is last, a few weeks ago, we had a taxi job fair. And I want to thank everybody who participated. Your contributions are the reason it was a success. We had thousands and thousands of applicants that came, learned about the taxi industry, and hundreds of them got started on becoming licensees. And we'll be working hard to process all those incoming applicants. I especially want to thank the TLC staff, who did an amazing job shepherding hundreds and hundreds of people through that process in a professional manner. And I'd like to call out Brian Switzer and Justine Johnson, who were really the architects of the program. I want to provide an update on one of our latest enforcement initiatives. As you already know, we have a presence, and now a constant 24/7 presence at JFK Airport. We have a special squad that's dedicated to enforcement at JFK. We started about two weeks ago with a joint enforcement initiative with the Port Authority, and that is targeting hustlers that are inside the terminal. Those are hustlers that are preying on tourists and visitors and New Yorkers as they get off planes and start looking for ground transportation. So in two short weeks, we've had a productive session. In those two weeks, that's actually just, in each week, we did one enforcement effort. Twelve cars were seized, 23 summonses were issued, and I think what will have the greatest deterrent effect, 11 arrests were made. So we're going to continue with those efforts because everybody that worked so hard to live by TLC rules, which I realize is not easy, but it benefits the safety of all of us, we want to uphold the hard work that you do and crack down on the people that try to do this service illegally. Another update, more recently, yesterday we announced an enforcement effort that we completed, and that was on accessible, availability of accessible service in the FHV industry, primarily liveries and black cars. We did a comprehensive investigation, testing all of the bases to see if they provided wheelchair-accessible service, and unfortunately, about 90% of them did not. So this exposed a real, you know, flaw in our system and our current regulations in terms of providing wheelchair-accessible service to passengers who need it. So I look forward to, and I think the more important work is ahead of us. I mean, the individual penalties that come out of this are one deterrent, but the greater project ahead of us is the long-term solution. And working with the industry as well as with advocates to come up with the structure for that long-term solution, and an important part of that is going to be citywide accessible dispatch, which would allow wheelchair passengers to connect throughout the city with wheelchair-accessible vehicles, not just in Manhattan, where our accessible dispatch program is running and running quite well today. And with that, I just want to wish everybody a happy holiday season. We do have a short agenda today. We have some bases, and we have a hearing on proposed rules, but wish everybody a happy holiday season and best wishes for the new year. And now we'll do base approvals. Chris, oh, sorry, we'll do the minutes first.
So the minutes are in the commissioner's minute books. All in favor of approving the minutes is written? Okay, so the minutes were approved unanimously. And next, we will do base approvals, and Chris Torme is here.
Good morning. My name is Chris Torme, Director of Applicant Licensing with the Taxi and Limousine Commission. We have seven approvals this month and two denials.
Aye. Next on the agenda is a proposed rule package on education. Ed Murray from the Legal Division, who will be doing his first presentation at a commission meeting, so warm welcome for Ed. And he'll do a presentation on what the proposed rules would require, and commissioners are, you know, he's available for questions, too, if you have them at the end.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Ed Murray. I'm an Assistant General Counsel here at the Taxi and Limousine Commission. The proposed driver education rules introduce major changes in the for-hire industry. Although all TLC drivers are subject to some education requirements, the target population for training has for decades been taxi drivers. But today, taxi drivers compose less than half of the nearly 125,000 licensed drivers, while drivers of FHVs, that is, delivery cabs, black cars, and limousines, increasingly predominate. As these proposed rules make clear, when it comes to safety and service, it should not matter whether a passenger is stepping into a yellow taxi, street hail livery, or FHV. Let me begin with an overview of the current training requirements. Here is a chart showing the courses that taxi and FHV drivers are required to take in order to obtain a license. TLC rules require that commuter van and peripheranza drivers be certified as a bus driver under state law, which imposes its own but similar training requirements. The three courses that are required of only taxi drivers are Taxi School, Taxi Refresher Course, and Wheelchair Passenger Assistance Training. Applicants for a new taxi driver's license must attend Taxi School with one of four authorized providers. Most drivers take a 24-hour course, which covers TLC and state traffic rules, geography, vehicle technology, and customer service. Drivers must take this course and pass an exam on the course's content, as well as one showing English proficiency before the TLC will issue them a license. Taxi cab training and refresher course. While driver license terms are typically two years, the first term is one year. In order to renew this one-year probationary license, taxi drivers must take a four-hour refresher course, which includes an update on rule changes and a review of driver responsibilities. After obtaining their first renewal license, drivers are no longer required to take any refresher courses for subsequent renewals. Wheelchair Passenger Assistance Training is required in order to drive an accessible yellow or green taxi. And under current rules, it is also required for applicants for a new taxi driver's license and beginning in 2016 will be required for applicants for a renewal of taxi driver's license. The three-hour course includes sensitivity training and overview of the laws that apply to transporting persons with disabilities and hands-on demonstrations. There are two courses that are currently required of both taxi and FHV drivers. The Defensive Driving Course, which is a part of the DMV's Point and Insurance Reduction Program, is an accident prevention course that covers driver attitude and behavior and defensive driving techniques. New applicants must take this course no more than six months prior to submitting an application, and renewal applicants must take the course every three years. Finally, local law requires that all applicants, new and renewal, take sex trafficking awareness training, which can be done online at the TLC website. Briefly, while licensed drivers may take one of three courses, distracted driving course is required of all drivers who violate TLC rules regarding the use of a cellphone or other electronic communications device. The remedial course for persistent violators is required of any taxi or FHV driver who is guilty of three or more violations within a 15-month period and whose license has not been revoked. Finally, drivers can voluntarily take a point reduction course and try to avoid license suspension or revocation under the Critical Drivers Program or Persistent Violators Program. The proposed rules introduce several important changes to the driver education requirements. First, applicants for a new FHV driver's license would need to take a comprehensive introductory education course and pass an exam in order to obtain a license, just like new taxi drivers do today. There are now more than 70,000 licensed FHV drivers and roughly 50,000 for-hire vehicles on the road, transporting nearly as many passengers each day as do yellow taxis. And so with the de Blasio administrations' focus on eliminating traffic fatalities and broader commitment to borough equity, it makes little sense to require so little training of a very large and growing group of TLC drivers and ones that predominantly serve the outer boroughs. The TLC intends to implement this requirement in a way that aligns with existing conditions in the industry. Unlike taxi drivers, FHV drivers are not required to be proficient in English, nor will they be under the proposed rules, as they often deserve distinct ethnic communities. So with this requirement, new FHV applicants would be able to take the introductory course and related exam in one of several languages. Second, no longer would a short refresher course be required only after the first year of driving. Under the proposed rules, taxi and FHV drivers would take a refresher course every two years when they seek to renew their license. Because of initiatives like Vision Zero, ongoing and often rapid changes are taking place in the transportation sector. New street designs, technology, markings, and signals are improving the ways that this city moves people, and new laws are giving the TLC important tools to crack down on bad drivers and deter reckless driving. While drivers who have been on the road for years have developed many critical skills for maneuvering through chaotic city streets, without some continuing education, their skill set and knowledge base will be incomplete. Third, wheelchair passenger assistance training would be required of both taxi and FHV drivers. In its current rules and in its disability accessibility plan, the TLC has put forward a solid commitment to establishing a large fleet of around 17,000 accessible vehicles. But to get these vehicles on the road and meet an essential TLC goal of providing all with access to for-hire service, drivers must be trained to properly and competently serve this population. Finally, the rules enable the TLC to transition to a single education provider. As mentioned, drivers and applicants currently take courses from one of several authorized providers. Should the TLC decide to transition to a single provider, the agency will work with the provider to develop a consistent and efficient training program. With the additional requirements, the TLC is mindful of costs to the underemployed and unemployed applicants who seek to enter the market and will strive to maintain costs that take into account the financial constraints of these applicants. This is taxi driver Frederick Amofo. In the past five years, he has driven 190,000 miles and 50,000 passengers without getting into an accident or even receiving a traffic violation. He was one of several hundred drivers that the TLC honored in its 2014 Safety Honor role. He was also recognized by an international transportation organization for a safe driving record. The proposed rules will not just generate stiffer competition for the distinction safest taxi driver in New York City, although I'm sure Frederick is up to the challenge. Rather, they will have a dramatic positive effect on the for-hire industry and thus the city as a whole. There are tens of thousands of TLC licensed drivers, vehicles, on the road each day, and having more and better trained drivers will go a long way toward realizing Vision Zero goals and providing New Yorkers in all five boroughs with a high level of service that they deserve. Thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
One second. What's the total amount of time that will be required upfront?
Upfront, well, at the moment, the courses aren't consolidated, so a new applicant would need to take several different courses. The traditional taxi school is 24 hours, and it likely stays at that level. Wheel passenger assistance training is three hours. The defensive driving course is six hours, and then the sex trafficking awareness training is 10 minutes.
30 hours?
Yeah, and some of that is subject to negotiation, but things like the defensive driving is a state-accredited course, and that has to be six hours, I believe.
Just now, the for-hire vehicle drivers, is this new, that they're going to take their training course, the education courses? This is totally new, never before.
For-hire vehicle drivers take the defensive driving course, the six-hour course, but they don't currently take the rest of, sort of, the safety, wheelchair accessibility, that curriculum.
But what about this education course?
Yes, that would be wrapped into the education course. So it's safety, wheelchair accessibility, as well as TLC rules and regulations.
Okay, so we'll commence the public hearing. These rules were published in the City Record on November 18th with a comment deadline of today. So far, over 50 written comments have been received. Based on feedback so far, the staff has recommended that the rule be amended to add certain definitions, including for point reduction course and wheelchair passenger assistance training. Clarified that responsibility for payment for all the courses rests with the driver applicant. Clarified that new applicants for FHV driver licenses must, in addition to taking the course, take and pass an exam. Amended the rules to clarify that there is not currently a sole-approved training provider. Existing providers will continue to provide training until there is a sole provider. And finally, to clarify that the wheelchair passenger assistance training requirement is a one-time requirement. As local law requires, the rules in this forum were posted on the TLC's website on December 15th and sent to the commissioners on that date. And we're now ready for speakers, and our first speaker is Victor Calis.
Hello, everyone. Hello, Commissioners. Thank you for having me here, hear my testimony today. Just want to say thank you for April.
I just mentioned Victor is Commissioner of the Mayor's Office of People with Disabilities.
Thank you, Mira. Yes, I am. I want to thank you for what happened here in April, that we passed the 50% accessibility rule. I never had a chance to publicly say thank you. It's really making a difference for people with disabilities, and we're happy about that. And happy about the rule changes that are happening here, or possibly happening here, just because it helps so much for people with disabilities to really have parity across the board. There's a stigma around disability. People don't want to be disabled, and unfortunately, in somebody's life, you'll either become disabled, become temporarily disabled, or know someone that's disabled. So it will affect you at some point in time. And having people drive you from one point to another is important, but making sure that they're driving you and that they understand how to deal with you on a personal level, to talk to you like a person, to be able to strap you down properly, and most of all, just so you can feel like a person's important. And right now, medallion owners are the only ones that are getting the training for accessible vehicles, and we want to see that spread. And spreading this to for-hire vehicles really makes sense. It brings parity across everything, and most importantly, builds acceptance and tolerance. And once we build that acceptance and tolerance, it makes a difference. And that's what my office is fighting for every day. I've attended a training, and Jesse behind me is here now, and I've watched some of the training to make sure that they're really doing the right thing for people with disabilities, and I see that. And we look forward to this going across the for-hire vehicles. And I want to thank you for hearing me today. And any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I agree with everything you said, especially the part regarding acceptance and tolerance and perhaps changing the way communities and drivers in those communities think is very important to achieving your goal and certainly the goal of the city, which is making accessibility more available to those in need. And I just want to note to my fellow commissioners here that Commissioner Calis, both through his tenure under Mayor Bloomberg and now Mayor de Blasio, has been a real friend and an incredible resource to me personally from an educational point of view and just from an individual, always available to exchange ideas and brainstorm together. So I thank you for that and wish you all the best.
The next speaker is Erhan Tunsil from Lamto. Okay, thank you. The next speaker is Peter Mazur from Metropolitan Taxi Cab Board of Trade.
Testimony, we're going to just summarize because it's probably longer than the three minutes that I have. My name is Peter Mazur. I'm General Counsel of the Metropolitan Taxi Cab Board of Trade, New York's oldest and largest yellow taxi cab association, representing the owners and operators aboard 5,500 medallion taxi cabs of at least 20,000 or more than 20,000 drivers. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on the proposed amendments this morning. Maintaining a professional, safe, knowledgeable, and courteous yellow taxi cab driving pool is essential. It helps to make New York's yellow taxi industry the envy of the world when it comes to providing affordable, reliable, world-class taxi service. MTBOT has long been a supporter of comprehensive training programs for both new drivers, and we support additional training for licensees as a condition of continued licensure. Too often, I've heard drivers say, "But I didn't know there was a rule that prohibited that." The TLC rules are complex. They're hard enough for lawyers to decipher and impossible for licensees to fathom without proper training. The rules change all the time, and drivers need to be informed of these changes. We believe that every passenger in the city is entitled to the same high-quality standard of service that yellow taxis have been providing. And with that, all New Yorkers are entitled to transportation with a train driver who is familiar with the rules of the road, geography, and therefore, we support the change to provide this type of service now to the for-hire industry. Right now, there are too many yellow drivers who are asking, "Is it worth it to get a license? Is it worth investing in a yellow taxi license if it takes months to get a license? If I have to pay for and complete a taxi school? If I have to pass a taxi exam? If I have to pass an English exam? If I'm a big yellow target for enforcement, not only by agents, but by police officers, by cameras, and by mandated technology? If I can only charge immediate rate of fare while unregulated drivers are price gouging?" They call it surge pricing, but that's what it is. And if I have to drive a wheelchair-accessible taxi cab and participate in the program when, as we learned yesterday, many of the other segments of the industry simply do not participate. The question for passengers, on the other hand, is why should standards be lower for a for-hire vehicle driver? Why should I, if I take a for-hire vehicle, not have the same reliable, courteous service that a taxi driver provides? Why shouldn't my driver be trained as well as a yellow driver? Why shouldn't my driver speak English? Why shouldn't my driver be held to the same enforcement standards? Why shouldn't I know when I get into the cab what the rate of fare is and that we have a consistent rate of fare? And why shouldn't all passengers who are disabled have access to the same transportation all over? The yellow taxi cab industry has embraced technology, credit cards, GPS systems, and we have worked with the city to ensure that e-hailing is permitted, allowing more opportunities for yellow drivers and more opportunities for yellow medallion owners and passengers. The TLC, on the other hand, has not changed the ways that the for-hire industry has operated, and we still see that there are consistently the problems that we have in the for-hire industry, and we're glad that this is going to be a necessary first step to address that issue. Couple of ideas that we have. First of all, we believe that an English test should be required for for-hire vehicle drivers as well. If the TLC has made a decision that having a strong command of English language is important for yellow taxi cab passengers, then surely it should be the same for for-hire passengers who should be entitled to the same level of English proficiency. Again, our emphasis is on fairness, and our emphasis is on an equalized playing field. We need to streamline licensing so that it becomes much easier to get any type of license, a yellow taxi cab license. The question was asked earlier, how long does it take? 24 hours of school is true. Three to four months to get a license is the norm we're seeing today, from the time that a person walks in with the application to the time that they walk out with a license, three months, four months, five months, not unheard of. We have, finally, we have reservations concerning the potential for a sole-source provider for all training. While initial training needs to be closely monitored by the TLC, there are many entities that could provide defensive driving certifications. As mentioned earlier, that's a state-mandated program, so it's a state certification for that. There are many entities that could do the sex awareness training, which is now online, the wheelchair training, which I understand will be online, and the refresher courses, using the curricula developed by the Taxi and Limousine Commission. We are concerned about fees. Our drivers don't have a lot of money. We ask that the fees be controlled and that there be an opportunity for certification of multiple education providers. Competition among providers would be a good thing. That concludes my testimony, and I'm free to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Mazur. The next speaker is Dana Lerner.
Good morning. My name's Dana Lerner. Some of you might remember me. I've been here before. My son, Cooper Stock, was killed by a TLC taxi driver on January 10th, 2014. When I found out soon after Cooper was killed that the TLC does not require drivers to take road tests in New York City, I was in a state of complete disbelief. Clearly, this man who killed my son did not know the first thing about safety. He plowed into the crosswalk, he hit my husband, and he ran over my son. Even the cab driver behind him testified that he clearly saw them in the crosswalk. I support the rules which are being proposed today. However, I'm stunned to see that the new proposed rules will still not require drivers to take a taxi-specific road test. I truly cannot understand how such an oversight is possible. What happened to Cooper is a perfect example of how this is a huge failure in the system. It is a disservice to the drivers, the passengers, and the pedestrians. Taxi drivers set the tone for the city. They should be the most skilled and capable people on the road. Isn't it logical that they have the most comprehensive and rigorous training? Learning to drive in a classroom does not take the place of navigating on the hectic, crowded streets of the city. Taxi cabs are weapons when they are driven by incompetent drivers. Vision Zero will not be achieved if the TLC does not do their part to ensure driver excellence. Just yesterday afternoon, I got into a cab on Madison Avenue. The driver started speeding to make the light, to make a left turn onto Fifth Avenue. I asked him nicely to slow down, and he yelled at me, "Time is money." He knew, he proceeded to complain about the traffic, et cetera. When I asked him if he knew what the speed limit was, he actually did. So why was he speeding? A person who does not have the patience and skill to navigate the city streets has no right to be on this job. Lives are at stake every moment. I have had the good fortune to be in many cabs with excellent drivers, but it only takes one bad driver to ruin a family's life. I know it because it happened to me.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anybody have questions?
Could you respond to why there's not a test with cab drivers in New York City? Why you can go and get a license in upstate New York and then just drive in New York City, having never driven in the city before?
It's not part of our current curriculum. There's several suggestions that have come through. The Vision Zero Task Force is how to improve the safety components of our curriculum, some of which we're working on, some of which have some practical obstacles to. So it's something we're going to look into, but it's not part of our current curriculum.
Well, I implore you to look into it so other people aren't killed.
The next speaker is Randy Kornfeld from Kornfeld &amp; Associates.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Randy Kornfeld. I'm here as a representative of Master Cabbie. Master Cabbie, as you may know, is the largest and one of the oldest training facilities in the city. On behalf of Master Cabbie, we're objecting to the rules inasmuch as they seek to change multiple providers into a single provider of educational services. We don't believe this is in the best interest of the cab drivers or the ridership. As an initial matter of housekeeping, I would respectfully request that Ms. Joshi recuse herself from the voting on these regulations as it pertains to the single provider aspect. To the best of my knowledge, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, while counsel to the TLC, Ms. Joshi was a promoter and a drafter of these rules insofar as they relate the TLC, Ms. Joshi was a promoter and a drafter of these rules insofar as they relate to the single provider aspect, and there is currently litigation between Master Cabbie and the TLC, technically Ms. Joshi, currently pending in the State Supreme Court over this very issue. So therefore, we think that there is an inherent bias on Ms. Joshi's part, again respectfully, and that she shouldn't be casting a vote on this limited issue of these rules insofar as they relate to the single provider. Now, with respect to the single provider, what this change does is seek to create a monopoly. A monopoly isn't good for anybody other than the monopolizer. It's in the best interest of the drivers and the ridership to have multiple schools where they can obtain licensure at a reasonable cost. In fact, the cost charged by Master Cabbie, we believe, would be less than what will be charged ultimately by LaGuardia, who, although it's not stated in the rules, is anticipated to be the sole provider. So what we're ostensibly saying here today is what the TLC has been unable to get through the judicial system, they are attempting to get by fiat today through this commission. We don't think that's appropriate. We think that inasmuch as the rules provide for a single provider, they should be struck down. The balance of the regulations, of course, we think are excellent. We have no objection to. But what these rules are doing is they're putting these people out of business. They're putting people out of work who've worked for the company for years, their sole source of income. They're terminating their livelihoods in the industry by creating this monopoly. Again, to reiterate, a monopoly isn't good for anybody. It obviously stifles free market. There's no reason for the government to step in and destroy private enterprise. Master Cabbie has been in business almost 20 years. As far as I know, as long as I've been involved in them and throughout this litigation, there's never been a single allegation that they've been anything but an exemplary and qualified provider of these exact services. Why they should now be terminated after 20 years, for me, is something that I just, I can't understand. Again, I don't believe it's in anybody's best interest. Monopolies foster corruption. They foster incompetence. It seems incomprehensible to me that a government by the people and for the people should want to put the people out of business. When you create a monopoly, it's just by some people and for some people. It's not for everyone. This clearly isn't in the best interest of the city. It's not in the best interest of the cab drivers. It's not in the best interest of private enterprise.
Can we just get a little background? Who, like, I mean, either from the chair or from the speaker, just some background on this company, who they are and how they fit into all this?
Well, Mr. Gelber is here. He's the owner of the company. He was on the list to speak.
Madam Chair, whatever you think is appropriate.
And I think the speaker gave a good summary of the background. You've been in the business for over 20 years, teaching taxi school, taught hundreds and hundreds and thousands of drivers.
In fact, I think Fred, the poster boy this morning, went to Master Cabbie.
Wait, are there other companies in addition?
Yes, there are other companies that provide taxi schools. The proposed rules allow authorized providers to continue to provide taxi school education. It also provides that if there comes a time when there's one authorized provider, that one authorized provider would provide. But currently, and until there's any further notice, every authorized provider can provide taxi school.
So what's the monopoly then?
The, the, there, what the speaker's referring to is the potential that if there was one authorized provider selected, that that person would have the ability to, the sole ability to provide education. And that, the rules leave that open. They leave that as a possibility. They don't say that today there can be only one sole provider. Second, what the rules do, which I think would be one of the bigger changes, these rules were originally published...
This version was published on November 18th.
An earlier version was published.
Yeah.
An earlier version was published over...
Maybe in January.
In January, that the, that this commission decided not to act on. The change between the version that was published then and today is that the version today requires schooling for FHV drivers and for taxi drivers. So I'd be interested to get your opinion on the ability of current providers to provide that extended education requirement, as well as the multiple-language component that might be necessary in teaching that.
Can you give us a little background in terms of the rationale for trying to consolidate into one provider? What was the rationale behind it?
It's a process that I believe started almost two commissioners ago. Under Matt Doss, there was an RFI that was put out to explore the possibility of gathering information on whether using a sole-source provider would be the best way to go. Under David Yaskey, there was an RFP put out to select that provider, and there was a contract that was drawn up under David Yaskey. And CUNY won that contract, and the contract was between the city and CUNY. That contract has not, sort of, the services have not begun under that contract, and we're sort of, we're in what I would term as sort of a limbo period, trying to negotiate the best way forward, considering that we want an additional requirement to, an additional universe of drivers to get schooling, and we have very stringent requirements on what we want for schooling now that are focused on vision zero, wheelchair accessibility, as well as drivers understanding the rules of TLC so they can navigate the process, but also extreme concerns about the cost, because the cost cannot be prohibitive for drivers to enter the industry. So that's the position we're in right now, which is very helpful to have this hearing, to hear the points of views from individual providers, especially how they would react to a broader, a broader world of candidates that need schooling.
Thank you.
If I may address some of the points by Ms. Joshi. In terms of what we've been told in sworn documents throughout the state court litigation between Master Cabbie and the TLC, the single provider aspect is a done deal. It's happening. The fact that it hasn't been rolled out formally is merely logistics. But while in court, in sworn affidavits and affirmations and representations made in open court, two judges on this case, that is, as I said, a done deal. It's a single provider. Now, the rules that we've been looking at today on the website and what we have on paper don't hedge that at all. In fact, they refer repeatedly to the term "the authorized driver education service provider," not providers, and there is no footnote or qualification in any page of any of these documents that says...
Have you read the current version that's on the website that was posted on November, on December 15th?
As far as I know, I did. If it's been changed in the last...
Chris, Chris can...
Can I interject for a moment?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what was your name?
Randy Kornfeld.
Randy, certainly your right to come here and testify before this commission and express your concerns, but I have to say, it's a little bit disheartening for me personally since I've never heard of you. Most stakeholders that feel the passion you do write letters to us, inform us. They very rarely come here and pick out sentences in litigation that may or may not have any bearing on the hearing before us. We're here to hear testimony on a new rule. The new rule doesn't have affidavits attached to it. They don't have statements in litigation attached to it. Except for your comment concerning the potential for abuse in a monopoly, I don't know if I agree with one word that you said. Quite frankly, your accusations against the chair as well, recusing herself. We all work on rules. Does that mean we're all recused if we vote a certain way in the past? What is the basis for that?
The basis is...
It's just your own self-serving statement.
No, it's not a self-serving...
Yes, it is.
That's your opinion.
It is my opinion.
That's fine.
And unfortunately, I have a vote here, so I think my opinion counts.
It absolutely does, and I wasn't trying to stifle your opinion. It's my position, and it's my position.
I know what you were trying to do. You were trying to bully the commission.
No, I'm not.
So you're starting a statement about recusal. It was not helpful, and I'd ask you to withdraw it.
I apologize to the commission. I said it respectfully. It's a legal position. That's all it is. I'm not casting aspersions on Ms. Joshi or her character. I'm just saying as someone who is involved on the other side...
The facts that you said for the basis for recusal are the same we all encounter on a monthly basis. And I haven't seen you here, so I don't know if you've even been here before.
No, you're right. No, I have not.
Okay.
So I apologize. I did not mean to offend anyone. I'll withdraw the comment. But what I, the heart of what I was arguing about was the monopolistic aspect of this. I'm just saying, Commissioner, that in the course of the litigation, we've never been told that there will remain to be multiple providers. We've been told the opposite. If that's changed, nobody's happier to hear that than us. My client's been in business 20 years and wants to stay in business. Thank you. If you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them. If you want any written submissions from me, I'm happy to provide them.
Actually, if you wouldn't mind answering the question that I posed earlier, the ability to provide education for a broader group of drivers, one that would include livery and black car, and how to tackle some of the obstacles in multiple languages.
Honestly, I believe that would be better addressed by Mr. Gelber, who's the owner of the business.
And actually, Chris smartly pointed out to me that he's the next speaker.
Thank you.
So he would be able to answer. Thank you.
And the next speaker is Terrence Gelber from Master Cabbie.
Good morning. I'm Terrence Gelber, owner of Master Cabbie, president of the Master Cabbie Corporation. I came with much different notes written today than what we're talking about now, because it was our understanding as we approached today's hearing that limiting school to one provider was the vote today. So I'm excited beyond words that you want to hear this, what you just asked, Commissioner A couple of years ago, there was an RFP for exactly what you're talking about, and all the experts in the field that I spoke with all came up with one conclusion before we proceeded with writing our proposal, was that it wasn't written for us, that it was, it had been written with certainly a large, large, large educational organization in mind, whereas we're a small company.
I hate to cut you off, but we do have three minutes, so...
Well, anyway, they gave us 20 days to write that proposal.
What I want to just, let's not rehash the RFP process. Let's get to the substance.
I'm not rehashing the RFP, ma'am. It was a simple task to locate real estate, to hire instructors and staff, and provide what was necessary. Our timeframe was about 90 to 120 days to do that and deliver it as required in the RFP. So assuming that what we're looking at today, Master Cabbie has done it before. Nobody's built as many taxi schools as us. Nobody's trained as many drivers as us.
As you answered, yes, the chair's just, I mean, I'm not trying to cut you off at all, but I just want to understand as well. Can you expand your company to accommodate the requirements?
Absolutely. And it could be done...
The language, you can do that.
Yes.
That's, I think, what Madam Chair wants to know, and I think we all want to know that. Can you accommodate the rules as proposed?
Yes. Absolutely. Yeah, I believe that private industry could always do it less expensively than the public sector, especially if there was a competitive aspect to it. Thanks for having us here today.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Fatima Ace of Master Cabbie. We have a number of Master Cabbie people, if, if, if they don't need to speak, that would...
If I could wait for all Master Cabbie employees to be completely content with the way the hearings have gone so far. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the next speaker is Michael O'Loughlin from Cab Riders United.
Good morning again, Commissioners. Michael O'Loughlin, Cab Riders United. We strongly support increasing accessibility to taxis, and we strongly support Vision Zero, which is obviously a priority of both the mayor and the city council elected leaders in New York City. We hope it's a priority for the TLC as well. It's great to see steps towards improving safety. More taxis of tomorrow with built-in safety features are on the streets. Safer drivers are being honored. Data collection and enforcement is improving. In the age of Vision Zero, improving education and certification standards for TLC-licensed drivers should be a no-brainer. In an era when hundreds of New Yorkers continue to die in preventable crashes and thousands, untold thousands, continue to be injured, it should be a no-brainer that we improve the education and certification standards. It's the right thing to do for the passengers who pay for taxi and for higher-vehicle service. It's the right thing to do for the pedestrians who share our streets with so many thousands and thousands of taxis and for higher vehicles. It's the right thing to do for the drivers, who deserve to be as well-educated as possible for the important responsibility that we entrust them with. Cab Riders United strongly supports the proposed changes, including rigorous taxi school requirements, regular refresher courses, and wheelchair passenger assistance training. We also strongly urge the commission to further improve the safety and professionalism of New York City's for-hire drivers. Specifically, we urge you to require an industry-specific taxi and for-hire-driver defensive driving course, not a generic, off-the-shelf course that somebody can take somewhere else. It's a very specific job that drivers do, and you should make sure that they are as well-educated and prepared to do that as possible. Secondly, we also would urge you to consider a road test for drivers. Regarding the rules proposed today, all New Yorkers deserve the same standards of safety and the same quality of service. The drivers licensed by the TLC provide a crucial public service and must be well-trained for their job, no matter what color car they drive, no matter what neighborhood they serve. Particular points of emphasis we would urge you to stress in the training, those violations that cause the greatest harm: speeding, failure to yield, doring. I want to share with you a couple of voices of passengers that we've heard in the last 24 to 48 hours on these topics. Kate from Manhattan, "The issue really concerns me because I was in a cab accident last year. Head-on crash with a limo. I've also taken many cab rides with drivers who do not know the most basic routes for getting across town." Yorgos, who I think is from Queens, "My profession, general contractor, requires me to drive for hours every day into the city. The bad and dangerous driving habits that I see every day from taxi and limo drivers are undescribable. The frustration and road rage that their driving behavior is causing is very dangerous." David from Brooklyn, "TLC drivers must be able to safely navigate our dense urban landscape filled with people of all ages who are walking, biking, strolling, and who are extremely vulnerable to injury or death if struck by a driver. As such, all for-hire drivers in the city must be held to high standards and instructed through rigorous taxi-specific training programs." I could go on with additional voices. I think, oh, do I have some more time? I misread the clock. I'm over time, okay. Well, in that case, practice, practice, practice. When passengers pay for taxi or car service, yellow taxi, green cab, burrow cab, livery, black car, Uber, Lyft, anything else, we need to know the driver's been properly educated to provide safe, courteous, and professional service. Thank you for your time this morning. Happy holidays, and best wishes for a safe and prosperous new year.
Thank you. The next speaker is Edith Prentice.
Hi, my name is Edith Prentice, and... Thank you very much. I'd like to say first, three speakers ago mentioned online training. I would hope you never put wheelchairs in that group.
I think that was, I heard that too and did shudder. No, we will not do online wheelchair training.
Thank you. Unless you give everyone little models of the different securement areas, wheelchairs are very problematic, but more so than wheelchairs are other mobility equipment. The other mobility equipments include things like walkers, rollers, rehab rollers, et cetera. All of those individuals have greater problems with taxis than wheelchairs. Wheelchairs, it's got a ramp. It doesn't. We can get in, we can't get out. That's, it's a really simpler issue. These other individuals need assistance from the driver, which they're not getting. I remember a trip in which I was in a manual chair, and a driver refused to even fold my chair after I had transferred into the car, much less put the chair into the vehicle. my chair after I had transferred into the car, much less put the chair into the vehicle. Luckily, there was a pedestrian, the person who had hailed the cab for me, because as you know, in the days when we were using regular vehicles more, no driver would stop for us. I think it's really important, and we applaud the TLC, for the rules that would train all drivers. And all drivers also need to be trained for other things. All drivers need better customer service. All drivers need sensitivity. All drivers need better direction finding. Relying on a GPS does not help it. I dread it to say, how about the London taxi training problem? I mean, years, years, but you've never have a London driver say to you, how do we get there? I mean, I live on the corner of Autobahn. How many times do you think, I mean, Overlook, I get delivered to Autobahn. Autobahn, Overlook, next door to each other, I guess, in their mind, rather than the far sides of Upper Manhattan. Driver education is crucial and indispensable factor in providing equivalent service as well. When we hail a cab, we basically get ignored. Whether it's accessible vehicle or inaccessible vehicle, we're getting ignored, and we're not just wheelchairs. People with service animals, people with long canes, people with other apparent disabilities regularly get ignored by passing taxis. This is unacceptable. For the true equivalent service required by the for-hire vehicle rule, which we all heard about yesterday's findings, know that we're not getting equivalent service. The fact of the number of vehicles that are allowed to pick up for other bases is miniscule. The for-hire vehicle rule had never any hopes of serving, but training every driver is very important. A friend called Uber, Uber sent out a green taxi. Driver had no idea. Driver was trained. Driver had no idea. Driver put in the four securement devices, not tie-downs, we're not going to tie-downs, and then expected the wheelchair user to ride into the vehicle over or around these securements. I think that the concept of a single training program might actually be a much better training program, because we know there's a level field, unless you could promulgate rules that strengthen the curricula of the individual schools. It's very apparent that many drivers either do not understand what they've been trained, do not use it enough to retain the memory, or just, option three, don't care. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And the next speaker is Andrew Volo.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Andrew Volo. I'm the founder of Total Compliance Solution. Currently, I'm an industry representative at Oath, and I'm on the advisory board for the members of, board member of Cab Riders United. I've been driving taxis and limousines on and off for over 40 years, and until recently, I ran the New York City Taxi Driver, FHV Driver Institute for the last 16 years. I know firsthand the importance of improving the education standards for our professional drivers, and the opportunity for New York to set the gold standard for taxi training nationwide. I applaud the TLC for proposing the rules that elevate driver training and certification standards. I believe this is essential, and support some additional changes in order to reach Mayor de Blasio's Vision Zero goal of eliminating traffic-related injuries and death. I strongly urge the TLC to implement the following changes to improve the safety and professionalism of all TLC drivers: requiring all new and renewing TLC drivers to take a comprehensive TLC-authorized license renewal course before they can renew their license, their TLC license, especially those that are renewing their probationary license the first year. Very important to get them in the first year, not after three years. Require all new and renewing TLC drivers to take an industry-specific taxi and for-hire defensive driving course with added time to cover topics professional drivers need to know. You may like to know that there is a taxi-specific defensive driving course already approved at the DMV up in Albany that is New York State certified. Require behind-the-wheel driving instructions for all new drivers, and not just for drivers involved in crashes or with reckless driving convictions. It makes little sense to wait for drivers to be involved in frequent crashes or serious driving instances as Vision Zero sets forth. Frankly, we owe better to passengers and pedestrians alike, as well as to the drivers. It's simply not right to license drivers and allow them to have their first New York City driving experience, piloting tons of steel, not unlike commercial drivers, through densely crowded streets with vulnerable New Yorkers inside and outside the vehicle for a grueling 12-hour shift. We do demand excessive instructions and certification, including road testing, for other transportation professionals such as commercial drivers, who are required to hold a commercial driver's license or CDL. There ought to be similar standards for TLC drivers. Taxi and FHV drivers do important work. They ought to be compensated, and in an industry which ought to enjoy a level playing field. We all benefit when the work of these hard-working drivers is treated as such. It's time to require truly professional standards for the city's taxi and FHV driver, vehicle drivers, the gold standard for safety and customer service, whether via TLC regulations, the city, or state law if necessary. Thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tweeps Phillips from the Committee for Taxi Safety.
Good morning. My name is Tweeps Phillips, and I am the executive director of the Committee for Taxi Safety, and I want to thank you for having this hearing today. On behalf of the members of the Committee for Taxi Safety, I wish to express our strong support for the rules set before you. We agree that all drivers, no matter what type of vehicle they drive, should provide service, a standard, a high standard of service, and we agree with the set before you, and hope that this passes. We have just a few, I guess, issues in regards to the rule. We think that we would appreciate the effort with regards to this rule. We expect further combinations to be made with respect to drivers' needs. The English writing and reading proficiency has posed a strenuous barrier to thousands of potential drivers who would provide excellent service as a yellow taxi driver. The English-language written requirement should be amended, and we'd like to see sort of further explanation on what those requirements would be. In addition to those applicants who have completed the fingerprinting, the drug testing, and driving school requirements, they should be allowed to be sponsored by a fleet, a medallion owner, or a licensed agent, as to begin driving with a temporary license. Sponsorship in the past is how many drivers became successful and had long careers in the industry, safe careers in the industry. Connecting operators with new drivers in a mutually productive effort will result in safer drivers committed to serving our city's passengers. Sponsorship of drivers applicants will help the city retain professional drivers for years to come. So on behalf of the committee, we'd like to thank you for this opportunity to speak to you today on the rules, and wish you a very happy holidays and a happy new year. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Good morning, Tweeps. Thank you for your testimony. Just one quick question concerning the English language, reading, and writing proficiency. In your written testimony that was given to us, it seems to suggest that you're suggesting, and I have to say I'm sympathetic to this suggestion, that the English-language written requirement be removed, but the English speaking remain. Is that what you're saying?
That's right, yes. I think, you know, obviously, for a lot of non-English speakers, the writing requirement is actually very difficult. I think they actually have the ability to speak English well, but, you know, writing in English when your native language is something else is actually very difficult, and I think that poses a big barrier.
I think writing English is difficult for everyone at this table right here.
I would agree. I could barely read my testimony, so, yeah. Any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And the next speaker is Jessie Lorrie from Easter Seals.
Good morning, members of the Commission. I'm Jessie Lorrie from Easter Seals. I've been working with Easter Seals since 2008, since the beginning of Accessible Dispatch, to provide wheelchair-accessible taxi driver training. I've trained over thousands of drivers here in New York City, and we've been really ecstatic with the success of expanding accessibility with the work that you have done on the Taxi and Limousine Commission over the past couple of years. I've spent my entire career working with people with disabilities, and I see the impact that this has on their quality of life, and I'm here to endorse these rule changes as written, especially the rule changes that allow several providers to provide an approved curriculum on wheelchair passenger assistance for people with disabilities. Easter Seals, as an operator of wheelchair-accessible transportation nationally, knows the importance of well-trained drivers. In fact, we've seen the potential dangers of untrained drivers. It can be a matter of life and death for people with disabilities. At Easter Seals, we, in fact, train our drivers regularly and recertify them regularly, even if they transport people with disabilities every day, to ensure that their skills are up to par. As you know, taxi drivers do not transport people in wheelchairs every day, even if they drive a wheelchair-accessible taxi every day, so we would encourage that recertification requirement for drivers of wheelchair-accessible taxis. We're also proud partners with some of the largest medallion operators of wheelchair-accessible taxis that provide regular training and refresher courses in their garages. It's been my pleasure to work with them, and they've really set a high standard for wheelchair-accessible taxi service in New York, and I hope the TLC continues to look to them and look to the providers of these trainings as you continue to move forward. I've been honored to work with the staff at the TLC that has on many occasions reached out to us and other stakeholders to build on the accessibility options and to learn from us as you write these rules. So I have to commend your staff and everybody who works for you, Commissioner. I think they've really done a fantastic job in ensuring that passengers with disabilities have great service in wheelchair-accessible taxis. I'm here to thank you for your work. Thank you for your time, and applaud your efforts to expand the training requirements, especially as they pertain to wheelchair accessibility. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mr. Osman Chowdhury of United Taxi Drivers Association.
Hello. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Osman Chowdhury. I'm the United Taxi Drivers Association. First of all, wheelchair-accessible training things, that's fine, everybody needs that things, but besides, some elderly old men and men have a sick, the serious back pain, high blood pressure, they cannot, heavy lifting, kind of this problem, we have to make some things change there. If it's somebody, you know, interested in driving, like, I'm driving like 18 years. I have a serious back pain, high blood pressure, doctor describe, make a note, don't carry the heavy thing. Now, I do, but I need the living, that's why doing, that's another thing. Another thing, also need a wheelchair thing, driver need a steady income, because sometimes the wheelchair, I don't discuss them, I like to serve them, but driver need to make income enough, because wheelchair, when you go, you need more time to caution, to drop up and pick up, and setting, this means more time they spend, driver don't make, they serve at times, so ignore. You have to look at that, so why driver ignoring? They need a steady income, they need more money than they can help the driver. Even driver pay more lease and independent contractor, and go, the city has high competition. If I work somebody behind, they paying salary, I work another one hour, I can took them and go, that's why problem. We have to find out real things, what happening these things. And also, here I see lots of thing against coming the driver. First of all, I've said, this start since I had, I tend training this 2009, and under taxi management, one morning I finished my ship, like 20 drivers, they making, like, winter season, in the street, they making training, that can training don't help any driver, because 20 driver, I can't finish my ship, on the street, they making training. And also, there are different wheelchair-accessible, three kinds of car, different, 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 maybe the training, but one car they going training, other driver doesn't know, another car, how to make fix this problem. Start since here, I have a certificate, I can show it them, what happened, the first part, they did it. I don't know that kind of training. They need particular training, they don't know whose thing I'm doing this there. And also, here a lot of things coming here, I'm talking about, I'm driving 18 years, I'm not getting any lobbyist, or anybody talks, I know the realistic things. Sometimes take the passenger, like, I think the fear, the broader, south, like 66 street, that's 60 feet, no left turn, you make a left turn, I do everything, I don't do this, this is traffic law. This is the passenger pushing us to make a violation of the law. And also, go the police station, three side people making open the door and go the highway. This is not a driver fault, everybody putting, all problem is driver. And also, sometime what happening, I go there, sometime, you know, the passenger go to JFK, we're going on the way, before, we don't get, they got the cab, maybe someone say, dealer, he's in the flight, he's pushing me, go, go fast, go fast, driver get panic. You know, some new driver cannot control this thing. I'm the old driver, I know this thing, I can't control them, so I follow my traffic law, but new driver cannot comply, they're scary. The only pushing, person driver get nervous. That's what happen in this thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the next speaker is John Kateras from Hannock.
Good morning. I'm John Kateras, the executive director of Hannock Incorporated. We're a nonprofit community service organization that's been providing services to the New York community since 1973. Hannock has 40-year history of providing adult education and literacy classes to immigrants with funding provided by the state and city, and over 20 years of experience in providing taxi driver education as a TLC-authorized entity. We are in agreement and support the driver training courses proposed by the TLC, and we are ready and prepared to provide those courses. Many years ago, we included actual field driving throughout New York City for our candidates, which may be worth revisiting as a training requirement. We can accommodate the additional requirements that may be needed to provide those classes indicated in the amendment. In addition, we have a language capacity in Spanish, Urdu, Punjabi, and Bangladeshi. We disagree with the proposed authorization of a single entity to provide those courses. The existing authorized entities provide quality education services for those seeking TLC driver education courses, and we feel the diversity and competition between the existing entities creates incentive for each training school to provide the highest quality instructors and instruction as well as amenities. We opened a new location recently and entered into a lease with TLC's approval. We have graduated thousands of students who have gone on to become TLC licensees and drivers in the taxi industry. We urge your vote for the proposed driver education courses and against the authorization for a single authorized entity to provide driver education courses. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a comment. Thank you. I just want to say that I could tell you, speaking on behalf of myself, that I will not support a single provider. So I could assure you that I will not vote for a single provider, just to provide training programs. So I know that it's not for a vote today, but I think all the years of services that you have provided, all of you, is commendable. So that's all I wanted to say.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, what was the company of this last...
Hannock. What is it? Hannock. And is that company provide the same services as the other gentleman?
And is that company provide the same services as the other gentleman? These are all private entities. Their interests are essentially aligned. And I have to say, I agree with my colleague. I kind of understand the fear of losing a small business. I mean, I'm a small business owner, so that's a very valid and terrifying thought, so I can sympathize with these concerns as well.
Thank you.
And the next speaker is Bill Lindauer from NITWA.
I'm Bill Lindauer from the New York Taxi Workers Alliance, the AFL-CIO Union of Yellow Cab Drivers. Of course, we are for education, but I'm not sure that a single provider would be a good idea. The fact that it was dreamed up by Matthew Dawes is a mark against it in my book. He didn't come up with any good ideas. Now, the idea is to put it in CUNY, I understand. CUNY used to be free.
Excuse me. Phil, do you mind just keeping to the subject instead of character assassination? That's not for this commission room.
No, that's truth-telling. Okay.
No, that's character assassination.
All right. Call it what you will. It was needed. Okay. CUNY, why would CUNY provide better service than these private companies? You know, why? Could they accommodate all the drivers, especially with FHV requirements? I doubt it. Who would teach these people at CUNY? And CUNY used to be free, right? Now, it's like $5,000 a year. If they impose a fee, what would make it so that the fee would remain constant, will not be raised every two years or so? And I haven't heard any compelling arguments against the quality of education of these private companies. I mean, I trust their supervision by the TLC over the training that these gentlemen offer, and I trust it's fine. There's been, I haven't heard any arguments against the quality of their training. And it's dubious, the quality of the training that maybe CUNY or some other company or college would provide. And the idea is to keep costs low for the driver. We burdened with all kinds of fees, and of course, we ticketed galore, targeted by the police and the TLC inspectors, everything, right? So, keep costs low for the drivers and provide good training, and I don't think the potential for a single provider is a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the last speaker.
With that, we'll end our meeting at 11:28. Thank you.